This is the November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the Christian Public Library Board of Trustees. We are being audiotaped and videotaped and we do have a quorum. Our first item on the agenda today is the meeting minutes from September thirteenth. Does anyone have any clarifications or questions on those minutes? If not, then we.
I'll accept.
So. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next is the budget.
Not much really, uh, there's not a lot to report in the budget, uh, things are going fine. The only thing that I ask is you pay attention to the building and grounds line. That will be discussed further in our meeting. Other than that, we are pretty much on track for, um, doing, uh, pretty much on track for this meeting here. That's it.
Alright, does anybody have any questions?
Who accepts the budget?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have old business, uh, update regarding new staff computers.
Our staff computers were installed on September twenty-eighth. George from sales came in and installed them all in a single day. He left, they were running fantastically, um, they were printing to both, uh, printers that we have. And we definitely have seen such an upgrade with the speed of doing of the computers. I don't, the computer hasn't crashed on me, so it's fantastic that we have that. About four weeks later, the computers stopped printing to one of the printers. So George came back to take a look at it. First he remotely was going around to see if he could find anything, cause he came in, looked at it, doesn't know why they stopped working. His solution was to, uh, purchase a new printer, one that's, uh, the driver is current to our computers. I said that's not, um, something that's feasible right now, uh, because it's not an emergency issue. This printer, yes, it prints fantastic, but our other computers can print to the other printer. So, uh, in the future, we might need to purchase a newer printer. But, um, right now, we are fine with what we have. But that was just what he mentioned, um, regarding the, the new computer not responding to the old printer. But the old printer prints fine, so, uh, technology.
Can anything print to the old printer?
Yes, so the old printer does connect to the public computer.
Oh, okay, good, so it's not, so it's not useless.
No, it's just, yeah, no.
It's just that the, so the staff computer prints, computers print to one printer
Yes.
and now the, the public use computer print to the other printer.
Yes, which is fine, um, that's why it's not an issue.
Okay.
If staff needs to print something nicer, so to say, they can go to the stand-up computer and print from there. But he just said that, uh, that, you know, it's probably not communicating because it's an older one. But our public computers, which is my main concern, does print to that, so we're gonna leave it as it is. Not gonna worry about it. But yes, that was, um, and I, I thank you for allowing us to purchase, um, those computers and it's a great accomplishment.
That's good to hear.
Yeah.
All set on the computers?
Yes, all set.
Uh, we need an update on the porting of the library's phone lines.
Alright, so on Friday, September twenty-second, uh, we officially went over to the town's fiber optic connection regarding our phone lines. So our phone lines, uh, no longer use Verizon. With the exception of the fax machine, which still uses your standard landline, um, whatever you call it, uh, telephone jack for the fax machine. So we use AT&T for that for long distances. But as of right now, Verizon is no longer in the building. So when that happened, we received our new cordless phones, which are fantastic, they're digital, they have caller ID. They sound crystal clear, there's no longer that fuzzy connection. And, um, they correspond with the phones in Sandra's office and my office. So we could, we don't really use it, but we could technically just call each other through, uh, extensions on each phone. It would come in handy if one, if we took a phone outside and, you know. But, um, but we no longer, um, use Verizon. With that being said, um, so far it's been smooth, except for, which will come to new business, regarding the alarm system, so do we want to just jump right in?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Alright. So the only thing that happened when we lost, when we gave up our Verizon connection is our alarm system from Wayne's Electric runs through a telephone line. So what that means is we do not have a line that calls to emergency services right now. We had two options at this point. One, uh, Wayne's Electric, I notified them, they came in. They came in and they told us that we could, um, add a antenna communicator, which is this giant metal box with a huge antenna that would have to go in the staff locker room above the crawl, the, I didn't even know there was a crawl space, but there's a crawl space here, uh, that would need to be installed. Installation, installing it would be free. The only thing is that it's contracted for three years. And what, with that being said, what happens is the monthly cost increases to, uh, forty-three dollars and fifty cents. Right now, I should have done the math, but I didn't. Right now, every three months, we're paying seventy-three dollars and fifty cents, seventy-six dollars and fifty cents. So there is a. I didn't do it, I don't have my phone.
Under twenty, under thirty, fifty.
Okay.
Under thirty point fifty.
So we would be, the, it would increase if we went with Wayne and this radio communicator. This technology is not new, um. That being said, I don't know what he, he said he would have someone come in through the ceiling and go over to the staff area, um, staff locker room and put the antenna there. He had an antenna box, but he said, no, we need a bigger one. The one he had looked pretty big to me. To me, it looked like one of those big radios that World War II soldiers looked at. And then the, we just, I didn't, and we figured out, um, that the, the entryway to the attic or the crawl space is in the children's room. So it's a pretty big distance to go from the children's room to this area right here. So I mentioned this, uh, to Nick, um, at town hall and, um, he mentioned that all the other buildings in the town recently have, uh, upgraded their alarm system to Alarm New England. Alarm New England, um, Emily, we located in Mattapoisent. They, I spoke with Don, he came in, gave me a quote of how much it would be to install a new system and what the monthly fee would be. So what he planned, what he would like to do is basically use the roots, the, the, the meat of the alarm system we have. He would just update the alarm box that's in the staff room. The keypads, we would go down to just one, we do have one in that entryway and that entryway. I've spoken to my staff and we've never used the other ones. I don't know if they're necessary. But the one by the staff entryway is the main panel that we all use. So if we were to go with New England, uh, Alarm New England, we would get one panel in the staff entryway. Everything is, um, high-tech, there's, it's, basically you can have an app for it. View, uh, where things are ringing, alarms are ringing. You can see to make sure everything's a lot, to make sure that everything's secure. And it's currently what every building in the town uses. The concern was, my concern was first, he quoted me, uh, a price that I didn't write, but I wasn't too happy. It was a month, cause I was told that the towns were paying thirty dollars a month. And he quoted me fifty-three dollars a month. I was, what? So Nick reached out, uh, fifty, I'm sorry, it was fifty-seven, uh, dollars a month. So Nick reached out and then I reached out and explained like, hey, you know, you're, you have a contract with a lot of the other buildings in the, in the town, is there something you can do? So he brought it down to forty-nine, uh, forty-four ninety-nine a month. So compared to Wayne's, uh, forty-three dollars and fifty cents a month, um, it's not that much difference. The only thing is if we go in Alarm New England, we will have to pay an installation fee. It was quoted here, I did, I rounded up, uh, to, uh, twelve oh four. Right now, we do have the stock, uh, gift fund that, um, you know, can be used for building maintenance, you know, updating any technologies, uh, if we wanted to go that route. So I would, I would not use the building and grounds, uh, line, which we have, which we have, uh, nineteen, uh, sixteen left in it. I'm very, uh, caught, uh, very wary of using all, if we were to go with New England alarm there because since I've been here almost six months, I have dealt with a lot of building maintenance issues between my plumbing and, uh, the, uh, the rodents and other things. So I would like to leave that there in the event of, um, and that also gets, also gets used for tissues, toilet paper, anything that, um, you know, is used to maintain the building. So I'm, I'm in the book, I don't know if, what would be the best solution here is needed to just stay with Wayne, get the radio communicator in here, um, and then just keep, pay, uh, you know, will, uh, our price increase will go to forty-three fifty. Right now, uh, we just, we are, we paid three months in advance, so we're paid through December.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So the three months that we pay is the one thirty fifty.
If we, to go with the new, if we go to Wayne.
Okay, so, so what we pay Wayne now?
Is seventy, seventy-six dollars and fifty cents.
Okay, so we pay seventy, seventy-six dollars and fifty cents for three months?
For three months.
For three months?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, we're on top of that, we're, we need to pay the forty-three fifty a month, right?
That, no, that would be the new increase.
Oh, okay, so, so we go from seventy-six fifty to one thirty fifty?
So, so. Exactly.
And that would include the antenna?
Yes, but we would be on a three-year contract.
And everything.
If, I don't know, if something happens and we had to get rid of it, we would have to pay out the entire contract.
Okay, and then, and so what would, would anything change as far as the, uh, service? Like for instance, I know like, you know, with Wayne Electric, we would be hooked back up to the notifications, right? So you would get the notifications like on your phone still?
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes.
They would be notifying, so that would go back to what it was before we had this
Exactly. Yes.
Hookup problem?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So what advantage does all Alarm New England have?
It's just a newer technology. It's, I would use all of the sensors that we have.
Do they have a minimum period, you know? And we lock them too?
I'm not sure. I don't think I guess. And the only thing with that is, can you see with Alarm New England? You can actually see, right, with the app?
You can see like, like, um, everybody does stuff like, you know, like, oh, that something's open in the basement, like a sensor went off.
But, so it'll just show you like sensor basement, but it won't, you won't actually be able to see the basement?
No, there's no cameras down there. Regarding our cameras, um, I, uh, Nick, uh, was also talking about updating our cameras here. That wouldn't cost us anything except the actual camera, because, um, the, Nick wants to put cameras outside.
Okay.
Which, um, I think is very, uh, helpful and very, um, I mean, it's dark in this. So the cameras we have now would just, they would just put new ones in and then add one maybe on the corner, I'm, I'm not sure exactly where.
And who's gonna be able to see the footage from these cameras?
I'm assuming it would be myself and Nick, who has the app.
Like at any time, you can log up?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Okay, that makes sense.
And that's the same thing with this Alarm, um, New England app. The, I mean, it's not connected to cameras, but you can be notified of like what is hap, like, if there was something that censored downstairs, like for example, when the, the sensor went off in the cellar, um.
So Wayne Electric does that same thing, cause they tell you what, so it says like, the last time the alarm went off, it said, it told me that it was the basement sensor, right?
Okay. Okay.
That, so that's what you mean, like Alarm New England would do the same thing?
Yes, yes. Yes. Instead of receiving an email or text, it would be a notification on your phone.
Okay.
That being said, I'm, um, I'm confused. Um, and, and I also should mention that, um, so early of this fiscal year, we are no longer on the sales internet through Comcast. So we will be receiving a check from sales for two hundred and seventy-two dollars. That could be used for the upgrade or anything else, um.
And that's because we're no longer on their internet?
We're no longer on, because we were paying sales a, uh, E-rate fee for using Comcast.
Oh, right, right, right.
So I turned over the mode into them and, um, we are, um, now on the town's, uh, fiber optic network, which we don't pay.
Right.
Well.
What type of things would make us not wanna keep the contract for the three-year period? What are the type of things that could come up?
To be honest with you, I don't know. I, I don't know what would, you know.
Okay.
If, I mean, if the alarm works and you have all the things that are here. I mean, unless we had cameras, like in, you know, inside where the sensors are,
Yeah.
the best it does is it tells you, I mean, as soon as it goes off, you get a notice on, on my phone and it will say, like right away, it'll say, um, sensor and it tells you where it is, and then it gives you an option where do you want to alert the police or do you want to not, you know, tell them like, you know, like if, if one of us had come in here and accidentally the alarm went off, like, well, we don't need the police to come, cause we're already here and we know that. You can opt for them not to come, but they're notified directly when that alarm, at least before this telephone thing happened. That, in fact, they usually get here the same time I get here. So, I mean, if.
I mean, slightly for you.
Slightly, yeah, they, their response time is pretty good.
We've had Wayne Electric for twenty years with the community center.
Yes.
They always did an excellent job, to me. It's cheaper, I know it's only a dollar forty-nine a month.
Yes.
But we're not paying that twelve hundred dollars. That I don't see a problem with the three-year contract.
Okay.
I'm sure if something goes wrong, they're under contract to take care of it. But I think they've, uh, it's been like almost thirty years since we had it.
Yeah.
Now you people had it.
Yes.
So to me, it doesn't seem reasonable to make a move at this point.
Okay.
That, um, if it's working fine for you, but.
It was when, you know, unfortunately.
You know why?
Other town building switch.
Probably to accommodate the new phone line is my thought, because the, the new fiber optic phone line doesn't work. So like right now, we don't have, there's, there's nothing. The alarm will go off, but we don't, we won't get notified. That's the problem at this moment. That's my guess as to why they switched to be
I mean, I wish they.
With the technology.
I mean, I don't know when this happened, you know, it was definitely before my arrival, but I wish, you know, the library was included in that conversation, but I don't know.
Do you need Verizon's phone number? Do you have to have Verizon's phone line?
No, we got rid of it, cause we're now on the fiber optic, yeah.
No, the, this antenna will tie into the new fiber optic, but we can't, without having the phone line, we have to get this antenna and that's what the, yeah, that's what the whole thing. Otherwise, we don't need the antenna, but we would have to switch over to an alarm system that ties into the fiber optic. Does anyone else have any thoughts or questions on it or anything? I mean, I agree, I think maybe we, um, we go with the antenna. Like you said, we haven't had any problems with it, see, true, other than with the phone, you know, like I said, the phone line. We go with it and then, I mean, we could always revisit it in three years and see if, hey, has it been working? And if it's not working, then we can, we can always do, or ju- just before the three-year period. That way, when it comes up on it, we can, we can do that. That's a, that's a thought.
I'm just, I wonder why people switched and when.
They just switched, they switched after the fiber, they got fiber optic.
I don't know, I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
Not my start point. Alright, do we wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we stay with Wayne Electric and with a three-year contract for them at forty-three fifty a month.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
I will go ahead and contact them immediately.
Yep, with the, get the antenna.
Yes.
It is worth mentioning that since, since it was discovered that the phone line has not tied into the, um, the alarm system. Chief Richmond has been notified and there have been extra patrols around the library. So it's not that, you know, nothing's happening or, you know, it's unprotected. The alarm still goes on, it's just that nobody's notified when it goes off, but they're doing extra patrols to make sure that, you know, everything's good here. Okay. Next, we have the financial report for state aid.
So the financial report, just a couple of highlights that I noticed. So I turned this in in the beginning of October, this is our second part to state aid. The only things that, um, just worth noting, um, the monetary gifts went down, uh, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Could be a number of reasons. State aid actually went up, uh, four hun, uh, four thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars. So from, uh, twenty fiscal year, uh, twenty, twenty-three to this year, it went up, uh, to twenty-seven as opposed to twenty-three. Just the times are changing and, and what gets checked out at libraries. Previously, we spent one, uh, there was one thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars spent in, uh, videos, DVDs. And last year combined, we only spent six hundred and sixty-nine dollars. It's all those streaming services. And then, um, the last one, um, is regarding building maintenance. For the previous year, we used seven, uh, one hundred, I'm sorry, one thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars. And then last year, uh, this year, we've, so far, we've used two thousand four hundred and thirty dollars. So I think that's just the building showing its age, uh, for example, the plumbing situation. So it's something to, uh, keep an eye out for when I start doing budgeting for FY twenty-five. And that's, that was it. Everything else is pretty, uh, black and white and, um, not really, you know, worth mentioning. I'm a bore.
Anybody have any questions, thoughts or anything on that? Alright, we'll move on to the next topic, hornet's nest.
So, um, this has been, uh, sort of resolved in the time being, um, because of our, um, our gap in between our meetings, but I will mention what happened. So, uh, Proficient came by, uh, the other day and they were looking for, they noticed a hornet was flying over, uh, someone's house in the area, they were there looking for a nest, because it accidentally, it stung the, uh, someone's child. So they were concerned and they noticed they were flying this way. So lo and behold, we have a, had a nest in a corner there. We had a nest in that corner there and that went all the way on the north, northeast corner of the library. So they sprayed it, took care of it, said it would take three weeks for it to, to work. You know, we were finding dead hornets around, which is, you know, it's working. And it was at no cost to us, um, and they, they took care of it. So let's fast forward to November, uh, they came in to do their, uh, quarterly checkup of our rodent traps. And, um, the good news is there were no rodents found, just little nibbles of the trap, the bait in the traps. What I, I asked, um, about in the spring, if we could have, um, protection against hornets, you know, building their nest again, and they said, yes, that is part of the plan. So when it gets warmer again, I will, um, just mention that when they go, about to do their quarterly checkup, that the hornet's nest. So that was taken care of, but I'm just shocked that, you know, you know, you know, thankfully, no one got stung, but they were.
Yeah.
They were up there.
Nest, yeah.
Yeah, they were up there and, you know, the ones in the back were less noticeable because, you know, no one really walks on that side, but, um, but good on Proficient for following that one hornet that ended up over here, and they said that they could go four hundred feet from their nest and, which is about the distance from, unfortunately, with the child was still. So that was taken care of.
And so that's included, the horn, the hornet's nest will be, monitoring those are included in
In the.
in the cost of what we pay for them already? Okay.
There's one dang on the window.
Which is, which is remind me what it is that we pay them? Do you remember? We pay monthly, we pay quarterly?
We pay quarterly, um, I don't know, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
But I can get you.
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine. And that's included, so in addition to the rodents, they're not gonna check for.
Yes, and I will remind them, yeah.
And we'll get a couple of that.
Well, they do spray, including the spray, but I don't think they were spraying up. Um, and they use some other chemical, uh, if, if my, my knowledge is.
Okay.
But, um, but I will mention it when it gets warmer again, that maybe they can pre-treat it. I don't know if that's a thing, but you know, that way, they won't go there, um.
Okay. That's good. Alright.
Okay.
Anyone have anything on hornets? Okay. Moving on to the next topic, we have the FY twenty-five action plan.
So the FY twenty-five action plan is due December first. We are using an expired strategic plan, which is on my radar. Hopefully, next month, next meeting, we will discuss that. So our expired, uh, strategic plan, um, doesn't really change much in our action plan. All I did was, um, change some of the titles, so the patron services associate is now supervisor. But everything else here, um, was done previous. And we are still following, uh, along to each item in, um, in each, uh, objective. Uh, and we are still following uh, along to each item in um, in each uh, objective. Um. So if anything that might have been completed, I I there was, there wasn't anything, so I didn't remove anything. I just updated the FY twenty-five and, you know, it follows our expired uh, strategic plan. I do have an email here from Dina to uh, Rob of um, MBLC. Um, he understands that we're using expired um, strategic plan, so it's OK. So I just need a motion to accept this, so that way I can submit it to um, to Rob from the MBLC.
And when did the strategic plan expire?
It expired FY twenty-three.
Yeah, that's what I thought. And we have a set amount of time to get that, is it three years, I think?
Um. The email I have from Dina and Rob said to be completed by September twenty twenty-four.
OK
Um. But I haven't started planning committees and uh, and and everything else that goes along with it.
OK
But I, it believe me, it's there in my head.
So.
Yes.
So the thought process is have it done by the end of the year or that's not feasible?
Um.
What?
I believe it would be feasible by the end of next year, yes.
So the updated strategic plan will be done by the end of next year?
Yes.
OK
I thought you said it was due September twenty-four.
September of twenty-four.
Can we set that date for the?
So that would be the note from Dina was September of twenty-four.
I just write this because we will be correct.
Leaning it by September twenty twenty-four.
And and you think you'll be able to, you should be able to meet that no problem?
Um.
Or no?
I would like to get an extension, like if I, if we start, let's say in December, maybe I could get it done before December twenty twenty-four. But I need to reach out to to Rob, but he understands that I am turning in one that's expired.
OK
Because that goes with an expired strategic plan. Um, so I can ask for an an extension, so to say. In the next meeting, we can um, start planning uh, committees and um, reach out to um, people who want, since they wanna participate in this.
OK, so we'll aim for September twenty twenty-four, but we'll request, you'll request the extension till the end of the year. But as long as we, I'd really like to get that done by the end of the year, just so we can have it.
Yes. Yes.
All set. And then when we need to turn the action plan in this time next year, since it's December, it will be on an act, not a non-expired strategic plan. That would be the the goal.
嗯 The goal, yes.
So maybe by November thirtieth.
Certain November thirtieth.
Yeah, or even just do December first for for the both of them.
That one, yes.
That way you're turning in, when you turn in the action plan, you've got your strategic plan all all set up.
嗯嗯
OK
If that works.
Yes. OK.
Um, my only thing on the um.
Yes.
On the action plan was the first one, I still have patron services associate.
Oh, OK. Alright, I wanted to send the, I I changed.
OK, that no, that's fine. That was the only one on um, under. It's the third one down on the first page, it says continue to evaluate space for increased visibility. It says director and patron services associate.
Yes.
It should be supervisor on that one. All the rest of them look like it was changed to supervisor. That's the only one that I, did anybody else see anything that needs to be changed? Anyone else have any changes or? Okay, does everything else look like it was updated? If nobody has anything, we just need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the action plan.
I'll second it.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. OK. Next is the uh, vacancy and the new hire for the library tech two.
Um. Early in September, I received a uh, letter of resignation from our tech two committee. Uh, she gave me two weeks and um, she left. And immediately, I started working on getting that position filled. Uh, the job was posted for a week in-house. Um, and then after a week was over, I posted it on the MBLC website, the job line, All Regions Listener, which is all library related. Um, uh, websites in the sales network. Um. I received a good amount of applications, so that was very happy, uh, very, uh, made me very happy. And um, during my isolation period in uh, the beginning of October, I started uh, conducting Zoom interviews with potential candidates. Um, I held an in-person interview um, on October eighteenth. And I offered the job to Jonathan, who just started this Monday. So um, I collaborated with uh, payroll and accounting to make sure we had everything in place. So that when Jonathan started, so the welcome packet was done immediately by Jonathan. He had his key fob, um, and it went pretty, it went really smoothly. So Jonathan started Wednesday, uh, Monday of this week and we now have a full house again.
Yay.
Yeah.
That's what happened too often, they can't celebrate.
No. Not on wood. Uh, and I wish he be the best, um. She was, the short time I worked with her, she was fantastic. She was, she was very nice.
She'll be best.
Yes.
And that is a, correct me if I'm wrong, nineteen hour.
It is a nineteen hour position, a tech two.
OK Fantastic. Anyone have any questions or thoughts about that? The awning over the front door. Uh, I have reached out to Jim a couple times and um, he assures me that the awning will be going over the front door at some point in time. Um, I have made it, uh, made him aware that it is extremely important to get it up. I would like to have it up before Thanksgiving. Um, I did ask him again if he needed assistance and this time he said he did. Um, he said he was gonna reach out to some um, accusate contractors. Um, I said that uh, John had offered to help. So um, uh, Jim was supposed to reach out to John and then I let John know. So if Jim didn't reach out to him, John was gonna reach out to to uh, Jim. So I haven't heard anything that that was supposed to happen. This happened between last weekend and this week. So I'll um, double check with John to see if they made any progress. He's obviously not here today, so I will uh, see if they made any progress on that connection and hopefully, we can get that awning up. And back where it should be. That's the update I have that.
OK
Anybody have any questions or thoughts on the awning?
Um, if, you know, they wanted to get it for Wednesday before Thanksgiving, I will gladly stay here past our half a day.
Right, yeah, thank you, thank you. Well, uh, we just need it to be done. I just, I mean, I, and I didn't. When I talked to him, Thanksgiving was a couple weeks away, so it wasn't that I said, you know, hey, I need you to drop everything you're doing and do it in less than a week. It just was already like, but we're getting into the colder weather, we've got bugs and insects, we've got all kinds of things, we've, it it just needs to be done at this point. So we uh, we have to get that done. Um, if it, if it can't be done, then I think we need to maybe think about entertaining ideas about having it done. And because I, I just think it needs to be, it needs to be finished.
嗯
It's all done, right? It just has to be installed.
From what I understand, yes, it just needs to be installed.
I wonder if we could reach out to a call on it, except they probably have a waiting list, so that's what we don't want.
Oh, I. Correct, they probably do. And I mean, and then, like you said, he was gonna reach out to different contractors and see, I mean, I don't know what type of help he needs. Is it, is it physical help, like, does he need it just to bring it out there?
Physical.
And then once it's out there, do you need, you know, like hanging a TV, right? Do you need someone to hold each side?
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's probably.
What do, what do we need? I mean, depending on what you need, we can get people to help you, but.
Right, and probably you need to think about insurance.
Right. But we actually need to get someone here to do the work in order to help, you know, get help. We can get a lot of help, it's just, when is it going to occur?
嗯
So hopefully, we can get that situated. OK, um, next is the potential addition of a new table.
Um, our last Wednesday, I met with the friends and I brought up um, if they would like to purchase a new table for the Y A area, for the young adult area. Um, originally, when the building, uh, when the library opened, there was a table there, it went to the children's room. Um, the friends agreed that they will pay up two thousand for a new table. I just need to know if that's OK to to add an additional table in that area. Well, it doesn't have a table now, but.
Which is over by the, where the puzzle is?
Yes, that, yes.
In that section.
Yes.
You still have a nice table there.
I, yeah.
What happened?
The.
Didn't hold up or something?
The, the one that was there against the wall by the, where the windows are, that went in the children's room.
Don't, this one was uh.
And then, yes, the booths did not, they did not survive COVID. They were wonky.
Yeah.
And they're currently downstairs, um. But yes, so I just, I need a motion that I can accept, um, the addition of a table there. Uh, I have been shopping around looking, you know, get an idea, but um, I had a heart attack when I saw the price of shipping from uh, a library vendor.
That's the key, is the shipping thing, is the table's not bad, it's the shipping that gets you.
It's, I was like, whoa, why is this costing two hundred and seventy dollars to ship? I will drive out to it. Right? But it's, you know, I don't have to go with that, so I'm looking around.
Right. Right, so.
But it's desperately needed. We have a lot of tutoring sessions, we also have a lot of um, Department of of Family and Children's Services, they come here with their clients and they use the rooms to do activities. And when the rooms are full, I don't like turning people away, so we offer the periodicals in the children's room. Then that gets full and then I get sad because I don't have anywhere else.
Right.
But um, I would like that table, I, you know, I could take that table out of the children's room, but it gets used, you know, people.
OK
Um, and uh, it it needs, um, we need more seating.
We're trying to make it a welcome and being airy in the kids department.
Exactly. Exactly.
And do homework and chat and.
Yes. Yeah.
And there, there's definitely space.
There is space for the table, um, against the wall where the computers are, there are two like comfy chairs.
And they do it all. Yeah.
But they're not really good for doing homework or, you know, tutoring and stuff, it's just, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Some like this.
Ideally, um, lo- down the road, I would like shelving that in that, where the wall is. Um, because that collection has, it's just, it's, it's big. And with the addition of graphic novels being so popular, right now, they kind of just sit on the windowsill, so I have to be careful when I purchase um, those items.
OK
Uh, but that's another day, but the table is something that I think would be fantastic and, you know, it, I can't wait to just say, oh, there's a table there that you could.
Right. Sounds good. Everybody, I just need a motion.
Need a motion to accept from the friend of the library, the gift to allow purchase of a table.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. OK, the director's report.
Um, there was a lot said already.
I know, there shouldn't be, I don't think there's too much left.
Yeah, there really isn't, um, I, over my isolation period, I did submit a local cultural grant to the following places. I went obviously Kuschnik, Freetown, Ubefford and Rochester. Um, all of their guidelines, um, they weren't just specifically for things in Rochester or Freetown or Ubefford. So we'll wait and see what happens, um.
When do you expect to hear back from that?
They, currently, the cultural councils are meeting right now, so I think at the beginning of the year or maybe like late, late December.
OK
So it won't be too long. Um, I know the Kuschnik Council is meeting here next week.
OK.
I plan to move to January that you'll hear from me.
Or is it this week? Here. Um. Other than that, I think everything is um, pretty much. I had, went, uh, I had a sales meeting, a cert committee meeting on September thirteenth. That's always fun because you get to hear, uh, you get to voice your opinion on potentially new policies regarding uh, circulation. Um, and I love being part of that committee. Uh, we did host um, a car seat safety check in our back parking lot, which was super fantastic. They um, set up tables, they had brand new uh, 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 car seats to give, um.
Yeah, wow.
Wasn't as, it could have been the weather, the timing, I mean, there were some people, it wasn't a lot. And I had the idea of when this was brought to me of having, we could do storytime and have activities outside. So Ren um, created a storytime and we had drop, uh, take and make uh, little car kits. Unfortunately, we had no one, so can't win them all. But uh, but it was nice to see that, you know, other communities come in here to use the space and that they thought of the library, you know, the park that was perfect for that, you know?
Nice.
Um, but it it went smoothly, unfortunately, we didn't have the most story time, but um, I was happy. And I think that's it.
OK. Alright, um, leave your business. I believe the next meeting will be. I have Wednesday, December thirteenth at twelve thirty, if that works for everyone.
Works for me.
Yeah.
Me too.
Tian? OK, so the next meeting will be.
What, twelve thirty?
What, if that works, yeah. Does that work for you?
Yeah.
OK, so that would be Wednesday, December thirteenth at twelve thirty. OK, and then we are actually gonna go into executive session today, not to return to regular session. Um. To discuss the review, the six-month review for the library director. So I just need a motion to um, go into executive session, not to return.
Make a motion to go into executive session, not to return.
Second.
And we need a roll call vote, so all in favor. Nancy?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Tian?
Aye.
Jerry?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Um, so we are going into executive session, um, not to return to open session. Thank you.[1772.42]